This is NHTV 2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Okay, well members, I'd like to call a Thursday, September 24th, 2020, Special Meeting of the North Haven Board of Education for order at 3:30 PM. Our first item on our agenda is our consent agenda, which is the approval of our September 1st, 2020 Special Board of Ed Meeting Minutes, approval of our September 14th, 2020 Board of Ed Meetings, and retirement of Doug Birdfugler, a paraprofessional at Montreux Lee's, and Marie Moldalabi, a paraprofessional at Montreux Lee's, resignation, Board of Ranking, of paraprofessionals at North Haven.
Board of Ed meeting?
And Ikey Ziegler, Special Education Teacher at North Haven Middle School. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Need to discuss it?
Uh, yeah, um, yes, please. Uh, we get two paraprofessionals that, uh, retired on long-term leave. They've probably been working somewhere between 20 and 30 years. And I worked with both of them, and they're excellent, they're excellent. We had several, uh, paraprofessionals retire last, last year. And I'm just worried about the paraprofessionals that are retiring because to hire a new paraprofessional, you're not going to hire somebody who's been with 20, 25 years, to work in full relationships. So we're taking a big hit, you know? And I'd also like to say that Ikey Ziegler, I wish you well. She has been an artist for 30 years, as we're done. So, um, she's been a wonderful advocate for students.
Thank you. Is there someone who knows the teacher who must have a long-term history with them, to give them a paraprof?
Oh, you can't really tell, but it makes us look good, the special ed teachers look good. Uh, real nice.
Hey, well, in favor?
Uh, yes.
Any votes? I'm going to push that. Hey, so next to the report is one of the junior cheerperson. I'm gonna start my report by saying again, please mute your phone while you're listening in to this meeting. I'm not sure if Dan can mute the people, um, or sit down, but if you don't have your phone on mute, we can hear our whole family conversation right here. Please put your phone on mute. And with that, I'd like to just start off by saying thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to our teachers, our administrators, our state central office staff, our parents and our students. From what I've seen and what I've read, what I've heard, yes, there's been some glitches, uh, but the way we as a school community have come together during an unprecedented time where we're all doing things every day has been second to none. I spoke to people in other districts, and the way that we've been working together is, is, is just fantastic. And I wanted to say thank you to all of you for that. And I know our parents who are listening really want to move on so that they can hear about going back to school, the whole time or not. So I will step from there. And I will now, um, give it over to our athletic director, Steve Wombleball, who's going to give a presentation and discussion on athletics. I will be on your way.
You're fine. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm going to present to you tonight an update of last year, really briefly, and then also talk about what the plan is to have fall sports for this fall, so. So today's presentation is called "The Good, The Bad, and The Promised." So the good, we had so many good things happen last year. For example, we won our first swimming and diving state title with the, uh, the girl's swimming team. We won a fencing championship, a state championship with the Epi Squad. The boys hockey team was the sportmanship team of the year for the SCC. The girls basketball team donated about $600 to Coaches vs. Cancer during the winter season. We actually had a wrestler this year, and he won two championships, the SCC championship and Class L championship. He wrestled as a North Haven athlete, but he wrestled with nerdy referrers. Uh, Cal Ruka won the Connecticut Orthopedics SCC Comeback Player of the Year Award. He had shoulder surgery in April of 2019 and worked his way back and actually started playing football in mid-October. So that was, the doctors were amazed by his recovery.
If you want to take a.
Throughout the, um, the pandemic, when we were quarantined, we had to find a way to recognize our seniors who were not going to have a spring season. So we started to recognize them through social media. And one of the ways was through, um, what we call the Spring Sports Senior Spotlight. So what you're seeing is a picture that was on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. So we would ask, I asked the students and seniors to send me their information and their pictures. And in addition to the picture, there was also some sort of brief synopsis of who they were and about their favorite memory, uh, what kinds of recognition they received in their career as an athlete. So it was, it was a really nice way just to recognize because they weren't going to have a senior night, they weren't going to have any kind of spring season. We also had some NCAA signings that we also wanted to recognize. So this is just one example of Abby, who is going to be swimming this fall at Marymount University. Well, actually, I don't know if Marymount is actually active. Uh, some of the, you know, colleges have canceled their scholarships, I have not. But she was supposed to. We also wanted to recognize our spring scholar athletes. So there's Claire and Evan, who are our spring scholar athletes for the SCC. Uh, another way to recognize all of the seniors in the spring season, we have these signs produced. This was an actual lawn sign that my assistant Jen Forbes and I went around each yard and put these in their yard. Um, so it was just another way of saying, uh, we appreciate your, your participation. And, you know, we were disappointed that they couldn't play. And there were many other highlights. We had many other SCC scholar athletes in the fall and winter. We had several all-conference and all-state athletes throughout the, uh, beginning of the year. Uh, our fall sports programs, usually they meet with their interested athletes in June so that they can prepare for the fall. And we had to do that through Google meets, which worked out very well. And we had the first year of our leadership program, which was sponsored by the Landing of North Haven. The bad, and you can probably remember, for example, no ice hockey playoffs, heartbreaking. No spring sports season, as I mentioned. No 11-person, 11-football season in the, in this fall. And we're really not sure what's going to happen this winter. Uh, the CIAC has been focusing on the fall season, and they really, there's been no discussion yet as to what's going to happen this winter. My, my fear is that if they're not going to allow high-risk activities in sports outside, like football is considered high-risk, then how are they going to allow high-risk activities indoors? Things look good, we're supposed to go to Phase 3, according to the governor earlier today, so on October 8th. But I don't know how that's going to affect athletics. And we do have the promise. For example, we have 300 athletes registered for this fall in cross-country, field hockey, soccer, swimming, diving, and volleyball. We have three workshops lined up for next week. Every year, for the last few years, we've been doing positive coaching alliance workshops. So we have, we're having a coach workshop, which all of our site and coaches are required to attend. And this is all that made via Zoom. Uh, that'll be on Monday night. Parent workshop is going to be on Tuesday night, again via Zoom. And then on Wednesday night, uh, the student athlete leader workshop is going to be all of our captains for all three seasons in the Zoom workshop. We also have a new leadership curriculum, uh, different from what we used last year. It's called Lead 'Em Up. It's more team-oriented, more geared towards athletics. And it also provides the coaches access so they have the resources to incorporate activities into their practices and their team sessions. So let's, we're going to talk about COVID-19 plan and what's currently in place. We've been doing this since July 6th, when conditioning activities could start for the fall sports. We have a two-prong screening process, which you may have heard of. The first prong is an athlete-parent screen, where all of the athletes and parents have received, uh, an electronic slip that they print out, and they have to fill out their name, the team name, their temperature, how are they feeling today, have they been in any contact with a person that's been ill? And they, the parent signs it, and they have to bring that every day throughout the summer and up through now to the coach. So it's a parent screen, and that's, that's an example of what it looks like. And then we also have the coach screen. So every day, whether it's a practice or a game, the coach is questioning the athletes on a variety of topics. And here's a, it's a little distorted because I had to get it onto the PowerPoint. But they're asking these questions of every single player. So usually with our teams, there's at least two coaches. So they're asking the, the athletes to show up 20 minutes before the practice starts. They're screening their, their individuals, and we're making sure that there's, there's no, you know, concerns, no symptoms, and certainly no, um, cases. Also, we're requiring that masks are worn at all times pre-practice. So when an athlete is walking to the field or to the athletic environment, post-practice, when they're walking away, any team meeting that's going on, masks should be worn. And they only take them off once the physical activity begins. And the coaches, they're required to wear the masks the entire time. Also, coaches have been providing cleaning supplies to sanitize sports equipment. Um, we've even given it to like the soccer coaches. Uh, they're not supposed to, you know, touch the ball with their hands, except for goalkeepers, and they, they wear gloves. But we provided them with the supplies. We've also asked the coaches to have them be the only ones to pick up homes, to touch the goals, and they have to move things. So we're really trying to make it as safe as possible for everyone. The SCC, our conference, has put together a regionalized schedule. So whereas in the past, we've had some non-conference games where our teams might have traveled to the Bethel for a soccer game or a field hockey game, or even as far as Spareful Prep for, for an activity. Um, now it's, it's really, uh, regionalized, so we're not going that far. I think the furthest that we go is Mercy in Middletown, um, and that, and Xavier in Middletown. But other than that, it's, it's very close to all of our surrounding towns, Teshure, Volleyball, Hamden. Um, so it's, it's very, you know, we don't lock the kids on the bus for more than a certain amount of time. That's the reason for it. And that includes, uh, the schedules include postseason play for all teams. So I, I wanted to break it down by sports, just so you have an idea of what it looks like. We have three home meets at Werber Road, two away meets. If everything is shortened, that's usually a longer schedule. Field hockey, same thing, two, two games per week, five and five is usually a 16, actually, yeah, 16-game schedule. And all of these teams are going to make the divisional playoffs. Soccer is very similar, they get five or six home games, five or six away games, and then another divisional playoff. And swimming and diving is not going to entertain any opponents. They're going to be doing virtual meets, which means our people will swim at their pool, and there'll be two officials present, and they'll keep the times, and they'll provide those times to the coaches. Meanwhile, let's say we're swimming Hamden, and Hamden is swimming at their pool. Might be the same time, it might be a little bit later in the day, it might be the previous day. Two officials present, they're going to be keeping their times.
I mean, you have an account there, but.
Talk to each other on the phone, share the times, and figure out the point system so that they can determine, you know, who has the most points. Um, and there'll be a postseason for that as well, in a virtual manner. Volleyball, which has been a hot topic because it's an indoor activity, but all of our volleyball players and coaches are wearing masks throughout their practices and throughout their games. That was the only way that the CIAC would endorse, and the DPH, that was the only way the DPH would endorse indoor volleyball. Um, there have similar schedules to the other, um, team sports. So I'm going to talk a little bit about busing. We are allowed to use the buses, however, it's got to be 50% of the maximum capacity, which is 35 people. We are allowing parents to transport athletes, which has always been done in the past with proper documentation and a valid reason. Now, we're telling the parents, they don't necessarily have to have a reason, we just want the documentation. So we ask that if a parent wants to drive a child to a game or from a game, please submit that paperwork by the morning of that event so that we can tell the coaches in a timely manner so that they know not to expect a student on the bus being to or from a game. I want to be clear that students are not allowed to drive to events or from events. It has to be parents who are driving it or guardians. So there's been talk about spectators, what are we going to do with spectators? And, um, this has been, this has talked, this has been going on throughout the conference and throughout the state. So regardless of what we're allowing onsite, sorry. Excuse me, could everyone please mute their phones? Thank you. Thank you. Regardless of what we're allowing onsite, um, the superintendent wanted to make sure that there was some alternative for the, um, the games and for viewing games. So we are working with NHTV to broadcast all of our home events. That includes the three cross-country meets, all the soccer games, all the field hockey games, and all of the swimming meets. Um, so it's all going to be on NHTV, and also they usually connect with Facebook, so those can be on Facebook as well. So, can we, can we go back a little bit? Yeah, so, um, the district will cover the cost of these broadcasts because typically when the NHTV, uh, broadcasts football games, it's through sponsorships. And we wouldn't want the, either NHTV, uh, or ourselves to reach out to businesses considering that it's been a very difficult time economically for everyone. So, uh, the district is going to cover those costs. So specifically for volleyball, in the Genesee, we have a Pixelot camera which broadcasts to the NFHS Network. And that is a subscription-based program. However, we're, it's, it's about $11 a month per, per subscription. And in addition to NHTV, the district is committed to covering the costs for those families as well so that they can watch from the comfort of their own home on a computer. So the following are what I would propose as, uh, fall sports guidelines to allow onsite spectators. Only parents and guardians of your favorite athletes. So we're, we're limiting, limiting it to family members. Parents and other spectators from visiting teams are not allowed at North Haven High School games, practices, and strategies. All of these spectators onsite must wear a mask. We remove the bleachers from the turf area, so there are no bleachers to sit on, which would encourage that social distancing. Spectators are allowed to bring a chair, of course, that's going to be outside the athletic environment. Um, staff will be hired for all of these events to promote safety and to monitor social distancing. Indoors, so there's guidelines per the reopening Connecticut guidelines that the capacity limit of 25 can be exceeded, but only to include the two teams, the officials, of course, the coaches, and one parent guardian per athlete. So we're proposing that that, that we adopt that as a district. So for the outdoor events, the outdoor sites, uh, we spoke with Chief Januszewski. He did not see a capacity restriction within the outdoor events rules, within those reopening Connecticut guidelines. And it does explicitly state in those guidelines that outdoor seating capacity would have a direct correlation to the amount of physical distancing, which can be accommodated based upon the bleacher capacity. So we removed our bleachers, we do not have a stadium for the turf. So it really looks like, you know, we have, we have an open field. And we've determined that based on that, we can have a, a limit of 100 people. That includes the two teams, coaches, officials, the athletic trainer, myself, our staff that we're going to hire, and spectators from North Haven, again, limited to only the family members. Again, we figure 100 is, is more than enough, and that seems very appropriate for these events. And myself and the staff that's present will be monitoring that and making sure that people are wearing masks. We do hold our cross-country events at Werber Road. Um, that is out of our jurisdiction, but the state parks are open, and there is plenty of space for social distancing. Are there any questions? Yes?
I see. One that, um, don't believe, um, I'm in different staff to monitoring if people are wearing and social distancing. What happens if there's some quagmire of the process?
Well, I think that, first of all, if, if it's someone from one of my staff members that's dealing with, they'll have a walkie-talkie, they'll call me over. You know, we're going to, you know, really encourage people to wear the masks. If they're not going to wear the mask, I'm going to ask them to leave. And if they don't comply, then I'm going to have to call the police.
And my second question is, in some ways, it's coach training, that the coach is asking the students.
The coach is asking the students, right.
Is the coach asking that the same questions to the assistant coaches? And who's asking that of the coach?
Good question. Uh, I, I communicate with the coaches on a daily basis to make sure that they're, you know, feeling well, there's no issues. So I'm in constant communication with the coaches. Steve, um, as far as the hiring of the additional staff and subscriptions and stuff like that, what, what type of impact to the budget expect? So as far as the staff goes, we do hire staff throughout the, um, every season. So we budget for that. So for example, we don't have football this year, so I should have enough, uh, in my budget to, um, because usually a football staff is, is huge. It's like six security guards, and then we have at least six people. Um, so with that in mind, we're going to probably hire at least one for, uh, each event. And on more popular events, when we feel like, you know, um, that there might be more people present, at least up to 800, then we might get two. Um, so I think that, that we can, we can incur that, that cost. As far as, um, your other question, which was, I'm going to get it. Don, I was just wondering, like, what type of impact that was. There was a second part. No, I think you covered everything I was really looking for. I have, my other question was, or is related to monitor people limit? That's specifically for this area around the turf fields. That's our, for, for area on the turf, because we have basically three sets. We have indoors, which is volleyball, and the pool, which we're saying is, um, we can exceed the 25-person limit only by the teams, which is included in that 25. And is that actually one team for swimming, two teams volleyball, and then one person per athlete, one guest per athlete? Um, for the outside, you know, for field hockey and the two soccer teams, because it's such an open area, you could really watch the, the game from any location, whether it's in your car or, you know, at any vantage point. So we feel that it's, it's more than possible to accommodate that with plenty of social distancing. Thanks. Thank you.
That's a good one.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, so I think you just answered that siblings are included in the fam, the families.
Yeah, they are, um.
Same as siblings.
We're going to say that for senior nights,
Yep.
I, then definitely we would allow a little bit of more than limited family members to just siblings, I wouldn't say grandparents on the list. Um, and we've talked to our teams about that. Uh, but for, for like volleyball, it's, it's going to have to be one for athlete, for swimming, one for athlete on those other events. Senior night, maybe we expand it just a bit so you get the picture. But at the pool, you can, you can watch from the windows.
Right.
And for, for volleyball, I mean, like, I would suggest that those family members who are, you know, siblings, go home to watch it on the computer. We're still going to hold to that one person during the match and just be around for the picture. We've also talked about potentially, um, if, if it's necessary, doing a senior night ceremony outside, maybe in the front, you know, body area where there's, you know, the atrium, and then bring it inside for the game. Everybody else stays outside, goes home to watch the game, and only the one person per athlete comes inside.
And then the symptom checks, um, so they're done at home with the parent, and then they come here with the paper from, signed from the parent?
Correct. We felt that because athletics is an extension of the school day, it would be okay, it would be appropriate to have that form filled out in the morning.
Okay.
And then, well, even if it's practice at 4 o'clock, it still applies to, um, to what was, you know, filled out on the board, so.
So it's not like read out right before practice?
It, it, not necessarily. I, like, when I take my daughter, I, I just, because I don't do it in the morning. I do it at 4:30, 5 o'clock before I take her. And I fill it out then, but it's, we're not expecting that it's being done that way. It's okay to be done, you know, 7 o'clock in the morning because we see athletics as an extension of the school day.
Great. And then, so no time check, started thing are done onsite?
Um, we didn't require it as a district, but I know that some of the teams do that.
Okay.
Um, but it, but it wasn't necessarily a requirement, um, for our teams to do.
Steve, I have two questions. So in terms of the, uh, the testing, is there anything random testing that's required in terms of the athletes? Or are these scheduled tests that, like?
Actual COVID testing?
Yes. Any sort of scheduled or random, the temperature check? And so the question, the question, is whether you only stand the check, uh, questions?
Correct. There's, there's no random testing or, or required testing of our athletes. Um, it's, it's basically, you know, we're holding the parent accountable for filling out that form, and then the coach accountable. And they are keeping those documents on file, putting them aside so if we do have an issue, there is some contact tracing involved and some, at least some documentation.
Okay, so the patient was not aware of it, so.
Not that I'm aware of it, yeah.
Second question is in regards to subscription, physical education. Did I mention something about the economic cost of subscription? Is it for the athletes' families, or is it just for anybody who wants?
No, it's for the athletes' families. So, so I reached out to the NFHS Network to figure out how we can, uh, pay them a lump sum of, let's say, the students on the volleyball team. So it's going to be 20 times the $11 per month.
Okay.
And then give them some kind of codes so they can access, you know?
Okay.
So, to that hope for that?
True.
So then we can't make that available for the opposing team's families as well since they can't be in the gym?
They could subscribe, and if they have a non-subscription, then they could access, and they can access, I know, a game at home if they wanted to. Um, just, you know, we were going to offer that to, you know, because a lot of times, like, if it's Jonathan Law and they have a Pixelot camera in their gym, then they would get it, but they probably wouldn't get the subscription just for the one game.
Actually, okay, so then are all of the coaches communicating with the graphics? Is it the other game?
That's, that's a good idea. No, I mean, I know that Sheldon has a Pixelot camera. I know that Jonathan Law has a Pixelot camera. Um, but I would, once we get this going, I would share with them that, you know, it's available through the NFHS Network.
Great, thank you. And one more question. Did I answer you correctly when you said that, talking about like the turf fields or outdoor, um, activities, that we're limiting it to 100 people, including teams, everybody? So, um, are we allowing opponents' families or one parent per player to go as part of that 100?
No. And I, and I mentioned that in the PowerPoint, that there's no visitors allowed, except for the teams, except for the coaches. But we're not allowing any spectators from away schools. And that is, seems to be, there's, across the district, across the conference, excuse me, there are many different policies that are being put into place. There are some districts that are going, no spectators whatsoever. There are some that are just saying home fans and no away fans. Um, there's some that are limiting home fans to, to per player, um, for outdoor events, and nothing indoors. So there's a wide variety of things that are going on, so.
So, so, okay, so then I didn't understand this. So then I just, I'm wondering, how, if there's someone actually to counter, right? Like, if we're on individual. How are we ensuring that visitors, parents, whomever, don't come in and take the spot of one of our, our families who then wouldn't be able to watch?
So we bring to our, a couple of different ideas. The one I like best is issuing langers to our parents, whether it's, it's one or two, to, uh, to the parent with maybe the students, a copy of the student's ID in there, or they put their picture in, you know, the little plastic piece that's hanging off the langer, so that we know. I mean, granted, I know a lot of people in North Haven, but I don't know everybody. So it is a way of ensuring that it's only North Haven people.
Okay, thank you.
That's very informative, very helpful.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I think it's clear.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I think there's an echo in the room, so when people are asking questions, if we need to speak up a little bit more, I think we don't have enough time hearing this. I don't, sorry, but I think, there's a, you echo.
And Steve, thank you for acknowledging the spring athletes. I think that that was really important. It was a tough spring, and it was hard for them to end the year like that.
It was.
I appreciate all of that work that you did.
And one thing I did not mention, if you don't mind me adding, uh, we also, we started to think about how there was this volleyball player, for example, who didn't have their varsity jacket yet. They were supposed to earn it in June of their senior year. So how are we going to do that? How are we going to afford a senior who had not earned their varsity jacket? So it kind of filtered down, so we made sure, you know, if a senior was either a four-year So it kind of filtered down. So we made sure, you know, if a senior was either a four-year player, which is always the policy, or had played varsity last year and was supposed to play varsity this year, then we made sure that they got their pin, their jacket, whatever was supposed to be awarded then. And it kind of filtered down. So any returning varsity player got what they were, they should have received. And we made sure that that happened through a awards drive-through distribution. So we used the Elm Street side of the high school and cars were pulling in. So and then, you know, we would see, oh, it was, you know, it was Olivia Peterson. So she gets, and we would have the package already prepared. So we knew it was into her and she drove off. So it worked out very well.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that.
This will be an uptake on reopening of schools. Well, again, I'm just gonna ask everybody, and there's a lot of people who want to hear this. There is a presentation. Please put your phone on mute and hold your comments until our public comment session. And Dan, I'm not sure from where you are, if you could put the people who are on Zoom, you can put them in on mute from your end. We are having a hard time hearing this here because of phones being, phones not being muted. So thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Sorry if I'm at one end. I figured I should just do a lot of things behind me. So this is our third reopening presentation. And it's intended to provide an updated overview of the infection rates, uh, both locally and by county. The presentation will also highlight different scenarios in which we may return back to school full-time and in person. The presentation will be posted to the COVID nineteen information hub located on the district's website. So we developed, as we've shown the last couple of reopening presentations, a statement that has been our guiding line throughout this process. We use it to ground our work throughout the summer and during the reopening. The state of public schools believes that in conjunction with the district mission and mission statements, the transition into the 2020-2021 school year must remain focused on safety as well as the emotional, social, and physical wellbeing of students and staff. Given the uncertainty of our construction environments, teaching and learning must be flexible and meet students where they are at. This chart highlights indicators for learning models. The risk levels are grouped by low, moderate, and high. Currently, New Haven County, along with all other counties in Connecticut, are in a low-risk level. New Haven County has the second lowest new COVID cases per one hundred thousand people in the state at three percent. North Haven is below that at two point four percent. Each week, the Department of Health releases updated data around case rates. It's supposed to come out today. I checked up until five forty-five until I left for here and it was not posted yet. So this is still from September seventeen. But the latest information that we have, North Haven continues to fall to a low-risk level for the leading and secondary indicators. Both leading and secondary indicators show that North Haven can consider returning to full-time in-person instruction. So the following slides are different scenarios.
Oh, I'm watching. It's boring.
The following slides are different scenarios in which district could return full-time. The proposed transition date for this return is Tuesday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty. These couple scenarios are intended to begin discussion around the most appropriate transitional model, keeping safety as a priority. I spoke to Ally Muldaill from QBHD earlier today. I want to get an updated, I want to get some updated guidance from our health department regarding our transition to full-time. She stated that there is a recent increase in positive cases in young adults. However, there are no reports of in-school, uh, in-school transmission as well as there's been a, let me get this right here. There has been a positive case, no positive case, uh, what do you, hold on, I'm reading this wrong here. Where there has been a positive case, there we go. Where there has been a positive case in schools, there has been no spread in the school period. Ally recommended a slow and steady return, and the district has taken this approach. So next I'll highlight some potential scenarios for the world. Each of these scenarios can be modified to meet the needs of our students and staff. Scenario one reflects a true full-time return. All six schools would return with all students attending full days by business. All currency measures would continue to stay in place. And the goal within these full-return scenarios is that students will be able to keep three to four feet of separation within each classroom. Three to four feet of distance is acceptable and is consistent with how other districts around the state have achieved a full-time in-person return. Administrators will develop schedules for lunch at the elementary level with the goal being to maximize social distancing while they are masked off in heat. Lunches in middle and high school will continue to be in the classrooms. They will be able to eat outside, weather permitted. This all being said, after speaking with Ally today, I don't recommend this return scenario. Due to our inability to cohort at the secondary level and because secondary students will be eating their lunch in their classrooms with less than six feet apart without being co-working, so this leads us to our next scenario. Scenario two, which is also a five-day return for all elementary schools, and all is the same as in scenario one. However, the middle and high schools will have an early dismissal daily within scenario two. And lunch will be provided in like grab-and-go format, or students can eat at home instead. Once students arrive at home at the secondary level, uh, there will be live support for students from approximately twelve forty-five until two P M. We're still ironing out the details on that, but we'll keep it posted if we can, if we can move along with the decision. Since it is difficult to keep six feet of distance during lunch at middle and high school, this scenario allows students not to eat on campus while still having five days in-person instruction. Breakfast will be made available for students twenty to thirty minutes before school starts, and they will be able to eat in cafeteria and appropriately socially distanced. Students who take the bus will also be able to eat in cafeteria on their own. The block schedule will remain in place in this scenario at all the middle and high schools. Blocks three and four are flipped so that lunch will remain block-free when we return to full basis. If the board is not comfortable with a five-day full or half, a five-day full or half-day return, secondary can remain in hybrid model while elementary transitions back to a full return. So there are options in all these scenarios. The next two slides reflect an anticipated average class size by grade level when full-time in-person. At the elementary level, the average class size is just under sixteen students. At the middle school, all the core classes, their sizes are under seventeen students. And the U A S and world language average under eighteen students. North Haven High School will have a total of approximately eight hundred and seventy-five in-person students, in-person students each day. The classes average about fifteen students, but there are exceptions to this where class sizes are larger. Dr. Dowell and I are planning creative ways in which to address the difficulties. So the district calendar will also need to be updated as a result of this full return. Elementary conferences will be held virtually on November fourth, fifth, and sixth. Each of those days will be an early dismissal at the elementary level. This week was chosen because students will be in fully, will be fully in school for about three weeks at that time, and it's already a short week due to all that. A change in the calendar will also take place during the short weeks before Thanksgiving and winter breaks. Monday and Tuesday of those weeks will be full days of school, and each Wednesday will be an early dismissal for all students. These changes return the calendar to a more traditional format. We have not adjusted or planned to adjust the calendar beyond this point as it will continue to be a topic of discussion at the monthly board of education meetings. So we are continuing to encourage all families to transport their students who have come from school each day. I know that the lines have been long, especially to pick up kids, but each day dismissals at all schools are moving more rapidly. In a full return, the anticipated average bus size at both elementary and secondary levels will be approximately thirty-five to forty students. Uh, this number varies as ridership is not consistent from day to day. However, we will hold families, if we do return fully, to determine which order of transportation they will utilize. And just at the bottom of the slide for when it's posted, there's a link to our district's transportation protocol. And we continue to communicate with families via mobile formats. I encourage everyone to access the COVID learning hub. It's constantly updated with information from the district. Each school, the C R C, the C S D E, and the C B C. That concludes our presentation. So please. Questions, comments?
Well, we have motion here. We're really traditional. We don't have this one.
Right.
Lots of one option two. One of the things I want to just bring up right now is for people to understand is those that do want to do remote learning still have.
Those who want to do remote learning that have that program will still stay in the back, maybe full-time.
I also wanted to, um, just ask a question here about middle and high school doing a seven-thirty to twelve o'clock dismissal. Yet at the same time, we're asking parents to pick up their children if they can.
Mm-hmm.
But many parents are working at twelve o'clock.
Yeah.
So we need to take that into consideration when we're making that decision and talking about our laws.
Which may be group ridership.
Which may be group ridership. And my last question, and then two more questions that are probably taking a lot of people's time here. The students who drive to school, are we limiting? Or we have no jurisdiction on how many people they take back and forth?
Well, if you're of a certain age, you cannot ask other
Okay.
children, people in your car.
You have a license less than a certain amount.
Yeah, twenty years, a year, less than a year, you cannot have people in your car.
Okay. And finally, I want to just, you know, I know they already, we talked about it at a previous meeting. But they continually have our bus company checking their drivers for COVID?
Yeah, they, I'm gonna ensure that they're taking tests in the morning of their drivers and they're checking on their booking.
Okay. And if there was a COVID case amongst their driver, among their driver, would we know it?
You would.
Um, and what else? Um, I, you know, typically we're talking about, I think, um,
I think we're just discussing with different outfits.
We're just judging. It'll make determination if one person wants to.
So, um, the bus thing, just, I have a bunch of questions, but so they're, they're doing their testing. Do we have access to that data to know?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that something we could, at least in an aggregate form, get access to? So we're not worrying about, you know, personally identifying, not real information, but just kind of how many tests do you administer, how often?
Well, they're not administering tests. They're not taking tests. So I could ask.
Okay. Um, and then on the, the full remote option, are the teachers remaining the same for those students or will there be staffing changes?
So overall, they're remaining the same. Uh, but if there's increased enrollment and class sizes get too big, we may have to split classes up. So that would, um, you know, change the teacher and the classroom per se. So right now, currently in our fourth grade classroom in Hattie, we have somewhere between thirty-three and thirty-four students. We've now posted for a position for the fourth grade Hattie because that's far too big at this point. So that may happen more frequently if parents choose not to send their students back to full-time.
I mean, I haven't been shy about my opinion with this. I think we need to go back full-time, um, five days a week. My question to you, I guess, is, I know you're saying you're not recommending doing that. Could you just elaborate? I'm not, I'm not sure I really understood why. Is it because of your discussion with Ally today or?
A little bit, a little bit. Uh, it also, I worry about lines to mask off and not keeping that sixty. Uh, that's where it seems to be because we're not able to cohort at the high school and middle school as well as you can at the elementary. So, um, students in the elementary are just in their classroom. Let's say they are eating in their classroom. They can keep six feet or close to it, uh, more than likely when they're spread out in their classroom with everyone in. But they're still just with their cohort. We can't achieve that at, say, the high school. So it just adds a little risk to it, and that's my hesitation.
I don't even know if this is something that's a possibility, but I know it's happened in other schools and I think more so like an elementary level. I have a friend whose daughter just started kindergarten in Florida and at her desk, there's like a plexiglass, and they almost make it like a cubicle with plexiglass around it.
We talked a lot through that. Uh, we felt that they would have to be exceptionally high because it travels. I mean, adults are standing, they're over the tops of them. Students, if they're above second grade, they're probably taller than those dividers. So not sitting down, they're standing up. So I, we didn't see the effectiveness to it. In addition, they can kind of stop right here. You're sitting back here. So the student has to lean into them to you, have to be in, students aren't very often leaning in to the middle of their desks, so.
And at the secondary level, they, the kids would have to move them with them because otherwise it would just lose the, a gentleman's helmet, somebody else has been breathing out. Do you know what I'm saying? In between, because the kids are kind of in your age, that's a challenge there.
Okay. I'll let it stop past what's, but I'll have it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone.
Hi. Um, so I have a couple of questions. I appreciate that we are in a good position, um, currently from an infection rate and data perspective. That all looks good. I appreciate the advice from QBHD. I'm certainly not a healthcare professional, so I'd never dream to give advice on that. But what I do do for a day job is I'm the director of data science for one of the largest private companies in Connecticut. So statistical analysis is kind of my jam.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I took a look at the publicly available data on COVID specifically focused on positivity rate and hospitalizations. And while we are in an excellent position right now, and the data today looks like it would support a full opening. The, um, the trend of learning. So there is, I know that the educators in here have probably been through some statistical, uh, courses, but the, um, the R squared on the positivity rate is, uh, is pretty high. It's a point two seven in conjunction with when we started opening schools. So what I'm looking at is I'm looking at like, did the opening of schools, whether or not infections were transmitted in, within the school or without, or outside of the school? Is there a correlation there? And from an epidemiological perspective, a point two seven is a statistically significant number. So that's medium to large statistical significance. There's also the P value, um, and a P value under point one is considered statistically significant. The P value in Connecticut right now is point zero zero three. So this means that there is some evidence that there is a strong correlation between the opening of schools and an increased positivity, which is where we are today. Increasing the positivity rate coupled with increasing, increasing class size means we have more vectors. And decreasing the distance between students from six, three, to three and a half, four feet signals that there's a medium to high likelihood that fully reopening will contribute to more positive cases, which are, which are strongly correlated to additional hospitalizations. That being said, I am also of the opinion that having young kids in school is valuable and having kids go back full-time is valuable. I believe in both of those things. What is concerning to me most is the space. And I'm wondering if we do go back full-time, can we reuse other places? I hate to say cancel library, but can we use a library to host a class? Can we use gyms to host classes? Because I, I, there are two competing ideas here, and it's just math. Like the math says that we're in a good spot, but the trend is bad. But we also have a responsibility to educate kids. So I'm looking to see if there's any other kind of creative ways or we can accomplish both.
So we've had long conversations with building principals, uh, from summer on to creatively use their spaces. Uh, they are using them now. They're gonna have to use them more. So at the elementary level, the average class size, like I said, is just under sixteen students. And most of our classrooms, we can achieve, I believe, at least, or at least any of our classrooms, if not up to five.
But like, I mean, Green Acres Integrated Day, like third grade, there's twenty.
It's a twenty-one.
Twenty kids. And September, which row is twenty-one, that's, like, that's.
So that's, that's, that's a space with those students that we may need to spread out. Maybe use a library, use a, a common area, gym, or, I mean, you're at the cafeteria, so we're not using that anyways. So the kids can spread out a little more. That, that might be a creative use of space.
And what about teacher prep time? So if the teachers are are not going to have Wednesdays to do prep time anymore? Um, and like I've heard from several elementary teachers that like they really, everybody wants them out of the buildings before so that you do the cleaning stuff, which is totally understandable. But how were teachers going to prep?
Hmm, so going back full time to elementary, uh we're hoping to increase their prep time by another fifteen minutes. So I would give them roughly forty-five minutes to get them back to the normal prep time that they had past years. And our hope is that we can, is reappropriate our custodian staff, custodian staff, so they can stay a little bit in the building so we can extend hours after school a little bit. We'd have to see how that plays out, um, because we still want two people in the building, two custodians in the building each day to help keep the areas clean. So we'll have to plan and see if we can get another hour, maybe hour and a half at the end of the day, uh for teachers to stay in the building.
Have we gotten feedback from teachers on the plan uh to go back uh full time in person?
No, we haven't.
I've been, I've been interested in hearing teachers' thoughts on this. I mean, I I've I've seen several other districts run into pretty significant staffing shortages.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Holchester being one that is, it's it's in a bad way right now uh from a staffing perspective. So I'd be interested to just kind of hear a little bit about what the teachers think.
I'll look at this for something fun, one minute, I'm trying to understand it. I was sure the cover of the law, cover of the law, I mean, also our cleaning for teacher. I swear that, but you know, I think we're intent to make our opinion. Um, I'm not sure if I'm going to talk, maybe you don't talk, you're administrator. But I would like to will on this tonight because I I know we need to make a decision for our families and our students as well as our teachers. For those that do have a kid or a teacher who does not want to come back, whether they're compromised or or they're afraid of someone who can make that decision. So I would, I would like to take this to vote in tonight so that we can have support with our, for our families and our teachers as well as teachers.
How are we on substitutes? Can we achieve the hiring rules for substitutes?
We have, we have a full cadre of building substitutes, which I think is uh two, five days a week at elementary and three, five days a week at middle and high. Plus we have the uh queenback interns, so we have a a full substitute. Uh, we're limiting our use of Kelly services as much as possible. So let's say, for example, high school uses all their substitutes, uh they'll be calling other buildings. We'd rather use staff and district than use Kelly services that holds or hand in or treasure other districts as well, so.
I'm on the next. Oh, sorry. Uh, so I have a few questions. Uh, the first one is in regards to the scenario number two in terms of um the virtual support.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a full class or that is just some kind of virtual support, just to the students, to support athletes?
So it would be by, it would be a full, it would be by class. We we have a schedule one likely set up at the middle and high where uh, based on the block schedules on eight days and on some of the, you know, hour and fifteen minutes. If you have, if you break down, you have some live teacher support in some of your classes and you rotate through them.
Okay, so the first one I'm asking is I'm thinking about the time and that goes back to what I did at my insurance service hall. You know, one of us is, you know, we need to transport students and parents, you know, not even those picked up in case because they are probably at work. And the fact that it's forty-five minutes enough time for them to get home and kind of settle in. And I don't know if the virtual support is structured or is sufficient whereby, you know, the teachers are just available, you know, just in case you get home after school. Uh, to like, ask questions or anything in regards to uh to the, but is more structured, is it forty-five minutes enough time?
Yeah, you have to play that with the bus company. It's it's, I've had taken what it takes to get home most days uh and just added that forty-five minutes onto dismissal. Because we've been dismissing a little bit earlier at the middle and high to get them on the bus appropriately to get them home. Uh, so I do think forty-five minutes might be close, kind of getting close, it might be more close to one to two each day as far as virtual support, but we have to iron that out.
Okay, so in terms of what you mentioned about the issue with the lunch. Uh, have you, what are other districts doing, even outside the state, like in some uh states, such as, I don't know, probably hasn't been people, but they have, you know, other uh problems. But just okay, whatever state and nationally, you know, what else can we do in terms of that lunch concern? So that, you know, it's a full day session and the lunch issue is addressed, what other scenarios have you had?
Well, there are some districts in this, around this that have gone back full time. I think uh West Haven, East Haven, they're they're back full time, uh their high school's back. And I'm not a hundred percent sure how they're handling lunch. My assumption is they're handling it within class, so they're not um getting a large gathering because we really can't have a large gathering together anyways indoors. So um, I I really do think one of the only options is to have it in the classroom. And so you have fifteen to twenty students at the middle high school in a classroom where you can't achieve sixty with masks on, so.
So you you feel that they're doing the same thing in the high school and you're not achieving the distance?
That is probably my, that's my assumption.
Okay, because.
I know you're wrong on that, but.
Yeah, so when I think about things like this, it's always trying to announce for you that, well, if somebody asks you, like, I had a new name, or was it that you told? And then catch live, and it wasn't that you told, but you can probably make a final decision on it this time in the world.
I know firsthand in elementary, um, one of the school districts that have gone back full time, uh they're eating lunch in their classrooms and they leave their desks and spread out across the room. And this is a class of twenty, twenty-one students, so they kind of achieve that five to six people with their masks off.
Okay, so which option I'm most comfortable with from an elementary school perspective?
Um, so I, like I said, scenario one, I'm not comfortable with at this point. Scenario two, whether it's, uh, I'm comfortable with moving elementary back full time, uh because they're cohorted and because we can achieve more space in that class. And as Amanda, uh, in that level, as Amanda said, in those larger classrooms, we can use different spaces to achieve that optimal space. Uh, with middle and high, I I'm, I'm partial to getting them back five days a week. I think that's very important in in the half day, uh, and letting them get their lunch. Because we've established a very slow and steady transition into putting students back full days and then uh mixing cohorts. It's not something I'm comfortable with doing. I think it might be something that we're more comfortable if if things stay the way they are and, you know, around Thanksgiving, you have to relook at it. But just to keep gradual steps moving forward, uh, I think would be the the best plan for us to, I think, you should do the prior.
Um, and then the big question raised is the second one, which is my option.
What's the one I just told him I thought got?
So maybe that option of half the, it makes sense, especially with the number of students, position of second place.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, okay, um, you know, as as of today, you know, we're we're twenty-five people on our social distance. And I know things are going to open up October third. But we have, we're just in our second week of the high school and middle school going full time.
Mm-hmm.
The elementary school is, this is their third day.
It's their first day for cohort two.
Well, maybe, but if you're cohort, yeah. What I'm, and and believe me, I believe every student wants these things for, I believe teachers want to be in school. And parents need to have students in school. What I'm uncomfortable with is the fact that we haven't had students up until very recently going. We don't know what's gonna, what this is gonna look like two to three weeks from now. And I've been keeping track of, you know, the school systems that have been closing down. I don't want to be in a situation where we're open for two weeks and then all of a sudden, oh, we gotta be closed for two days. Or there was one uh building that they had closed for two weeks because staff and students.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I know we have to, well, the thought is it's important for parents to know, teachers to know. But I'm uncomfortable with taking the vote tonight. I'd rather have some time where students have come back, maybe for, well, actually, October thirteenth, when we have our next board meeting. And we'll see what's happened with um students being in in a hybrid model.
Yeah, we can always pivot as well. Like we, that's being September twenty-fourth, uh till October thirteenth, it gives us three weeks. And if things pop up or if we have concerns, our infection, our case races, ca- case rates rise, uh, we can always pivot and relook at the situation as well, so that also.
Well, I think that's reasonable.
I mean, we were able to pick up on March twelve and just cancel school and.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, do we, so kind of going off of that, do we have benchmarks? So let's say like right now, if our infection rate stays where it is, then on October thirteenth, this is, we're gonna have a new scenario one or scenario two, however it turns out. But then are there benchmarks that K B H C has given that say, oh, if it starts to rise by this percentage in this amount of time, then you gotta stay hybrid or is there?
No, that that graph that's on one of your pages, if it less than ten percent, I believe that they encourage or permits full in-person instruction.
Okay, so we don't have like that, let's say it rises by by point whatever percent.
No, that likely, that no.
Okay. And then, let's say everything goes well and they go back to school five days a week, whichever one it is. Um, how then, when do we reassess again? Like, if, because you know how that he said, we'll reassess again at the end of September for October, like, do we reassess for January? Do we reassess like when everything?
I think we reassess every time we get together in a board meeting and we talk.
Okay.
Uh, numbers, like, maybe it's not an in-depth presentation, but I think every month we should have uh our updated numbers, discuss those and see what next steps to to forward like.
Okay, and then I know we're like wanna let give other people tax, so I apologize. But so the half day is really, it's the lunch, like, it's the moving around and having people all together for lunch, that's the sticking point.
Mask off under sixty is concerning.
Right, and then it's like the fifteen minute, yeah.
And fifteen minutes as well, yeah.
And then in the elementary school, um, is, would it be possible, like, the lunchroom gets crazy at elementary school, right? So would it be possible to like, if they were to stay in their classrooms, have like half the class have their recess? Because they usually couple recess with lunch. Like, I'd like, can half of them go to recess and the rest of them eat lunch and then they switch or something?
So that would depend on staffing and and if we can, the cohorting there might be tough. If we could achieve it with staff, that means staff will be going between different cohorts.
Okay.
So, I mean, if we had a K two and a three, five, would you, we actually have a K one, a two, three and a four, five right now. So if we keep that, that might work, uh, but is that something we have to play with?
So I just see them like, I don't know, like all over the table.
We can talk about utilizing that, because we would not be able to put all of our students in cafeteria for lunch. But maybe utilizing like, in some other spaces that are not traditionally, because we need, like, so that we can have small groups of students.
Okay.
And still. I think.
Um, just a couple of thoughts and questions. Um, one question is, so you're thinking that we'll either do one of these full-time um options? Students will either do one of these full-time options or be completely remote. Hybrid would no longer be on the table, right? It's one of the other.
It could be if you would, if the board hopes to keep it hybrid, say that.
No, you're. But that's.
That's not my suggestion.
Okay, I just wanted, because I'm thinking that there are parents, people listening that are wondering if that would still be an option. So what you're proposing is that people would choose, either you come back full time, whether it's full day or half day.
Yes, we can have regular.
Or, okay, and that makes sense because of personnel and everything else, right? Okay, so um. Just a quick like aside, but Amanda mentioned um teacher planning. If we were to go back full time, would teachers typically follow the schedule that they typically would, so they would have the same amount of food?
They would have the same amount of food.
Okay, okay, so.
That is what we just.
Okay.
The lunch.
But the lunch is the hiccup there.
The lunch is the hiccup, okay. So I think everybody clarified this, but I want to make sure that I'm right. What you're saying is the only reason why you're thinking you're good with elementary going back full day, all day. Your only concern about middle school and high school going back full day, all day is the lunch time. So my thinking around that, I completely understand and respect what you're saying, but my thinking around that is um, the state is allowing people to go to a restaurant and walk through a restaurant with a mask on, right? And then six of us, who are the strangers, can sit at a table and take our mask off and we're not even three feet away from each other. We're right next to each other and we're allowed to talk and eat with masks off.
Mm-hmm.
So um.
But again, that's your choice to do that.
Yeah.
Then our students, we take that choice later on too.
Right, so I I get, I totally hear you. I'm just like thinking out loud, people are going out and doing restaurants and if so, if a parent chooses to send their child to school and and people that would be concerned about that might have their kids home full time already, which is totally respected. But if you're sending your child to school, you might be okay with that three-foot eating distance.
Correct.
And I'm also thinking too, elementary kids, let's be honest, are, wow, I don't know if I can do this. I want to say are messier eaters than high schoolers, but I have two of them and they're not really meat either.
That's right.
But I'm thinking that they're be more responsible with their food um than younger kids.
Very true.
So my my thinking, my opinion is that um, we go full day, five days and watch the numbers. Because I think the kids need to get back to school, I think the teachers want to get back to school. And I'm worried about um reducing our our instructional time down to fifty-six minutes per block. That is concerning for me at the upper level, but I think the kids need the instruction. My opinion.
So you have one more thing. Can we, if we move to fold to five days in person, can we make a pitch to people who are able that the opt-out program is really excellent also? Because the more folks that opt out, the more space that leaves for the kids who are going in school. My family is an opt-out family, we're very happy with the program. And I think that I I personally know a lot of families that are nervous in hybrid right now. And that they, it, they're comfortable in hybrid, but maybe moving to full time would make them less comfortable. So can we talk a little bit about um all the great things that are involved with the opt-out program as well?
I'm gonna try that in a way, like, just Houston orchestrated the great things about that program.
So I was actually gonna give, if I had a report, so I'll just kind of share. We have about three hundred and seventy-three students in opt-out right now. Um, and the number changes a little bit each day. It's it's a bit challenging because people move back and and forth. So particularly at the higher levels, that is a little bit challenging because we can't offer all of the courses that we can offer in high school, of course. We've got students on um different platforms so that they are dependent to be able to have various options that, you know, we would have teachers for. Um, are opt-out teachers in the families that are working really collaboratively with our tax support? Because there has been some technical issues with the first weeks, most of them have been outside of the district. There are issues that um, Jen K has been working diligently with to try to remedy again. Each day seems to be getting a sooner on that part, we could attest to that, yes, we do. So, you know, if if more families chose to go to the opt-out route, um, from a district perspective, it gives us some logistics to have to figure out too. There's a bit of a time um in terms of switching kids over. I think particularly at the high school level, we want to be cognizant of the natural rate of uh the first marking period. To be a student who can go into school, have ratings for the classes that they've been taking. So it might look a little bit different in opt-outs. So we've already talked about um Dr. Dalai involving guidance counselors in that, just so that it's a really planned whole decision, you know, the, they understand what it might look like. Um, we probably have to think of different staffing, like, like Patrick said, we watch it, um, the numbers pretty much every morning just to see how how opt-out is going to be in the fourth grade. Um, I asked you, we're looking to now, um, have another teacher, but we'll take it easy staying in July.
So thank you for that. Um, I just, I think also the the point about disruption is an important one, right? So we've had kids start off remote, go to hybrid, maybe go to full time. If we have to shut it down, like on March twelfth again, that's like a lot of different changes happening. Do we have a plan for that transition, should it happen? Everybody hopes it doesn't, but you know, maybe.
For the the complete out, completely remote?
If we have to go completely remote again because of big second wave hits.
So it really depends if it's like March again and you know we're gonna be out for some time. Uh, we'll have to look at the, if the opt-out program, see how far it is in the school year, um, see if it's worth upgrading these students, putting them back in their normal classrooms or keeping them in the opt-out program. We have to play all this out, uh, it's never going to help those students, so that that'll probably be our last option. But we also have to look at staffing and see how we can accommodate all that.
And I think the expectation, if we were in a full um, full remote, full home, like before on March twelfth, um, the expectation would be that um, it would be live teaching. Similar to how the opt-out program is designed, middle and high, which would be following on a block. Middle and high school would be following a block, a modified block schedule, but there would be face-to-face contact with the teacher every day. It wouldn't be, it would be safer than snacking.
Yes, yes, um I I'm really uncomfortable talking in this.
This is a big honor.
Actually, I'm really uncomfortable making this decision, even though I know you can, I understand that. Is there any way or maybe uncertain progress, but if they were going back on the 13th? Is there for a couple of weeks, we keep the schools closed just on Wednesday? For a couple of keep cleaning for a couple of weeks to see? Just again, I just wanna, if we're gonna go back full-time, I want the kids back full-time and not in and out.
We could accommodate that, Wednesday would be a live remote teaching day, so.
Maybe for a couple, a couple of weeks, you know, see how it goes.
When you go back, if you met Doc, I'm sure that was something you had thought about.
It is.
Why isn't that one of your options?
Um. I I think being in school five days a week, uh I know our goal is going and it's going very well, but no matter what we do, it's still going to be full learning. Uh, nothing can replace that in person time with students, so uh that is not an option as far. We can look at the the clean aspect of it, we can still achieve uh appropriate cleaning five days a week as well. But it just, it could be another transitional step too, so.
Um, so I have to build this all over yourself, I bounce around, I I apologize. Something's are just like thoughts that popped into my head and then some more more questions. Um. Touching on what Amanda had said, if we do get to that situation where we have a second wave and we have to close, right? Why couldn't we just default back to how the school year started where kids have their teachers? And they go back.
That's what we did.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand that. The other thing, and I completely understand that and respect your point about you're taking the choice away from the students with their lunch, they're kind of being forced to eat with the mask off in closer quarters, right? Why can't in a building like this and in a building like the high school, why can't we open up the auditorium and have students four, six chairs apart? Or the gym or other rooms where we break into waves? And we use those spaces so kids can be more than adequately, the distance.
We certainly can, the obstacle there is we're using those areas for for instruction as well. So they might be utilized during lunchtime and 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 if there's a transition of students, we wanna clean in between two, so we might not be able to achieve that. So uh it's certainly an option, we can try to play with that, but those are some of the obstacles.
And as far as um. I just lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. Um. So going back, if we did decide to go back on the option two, I think it was where the the middle school, the high school go half a day and then go. If that is the way that it goes, I think it's absolutely imperative that that second half of the day has to be synchronous learning. I don't think it should be just office hours or anything like that, cause I know like in my family, my son has never been along on and just go to an office hour. But if it's a class, he's gonna go to class. So I I don't want people to lose that kind of second half of the day if we go that way, by just making it kind of an optional.
Certainly synchronous and constructive way that it's engaged.
Um. And then the last thing I I had there, and this is what I I really enjoy being a member of this board, because everybody brings very diverse opinions, everybody is very respectful to each other. And I hear somebody else say something and then it kind of makes me reevaluate the way I I thought they. I I agree with what Dot is saying, but we've only been in school like, my kids today was the first day of elementary school in person. I understand the the thought process of, we have a very small subset of data now to see how and what's gonna happen with, if there's gonna be infections and things like that. Um, I still think if we are targeting that October 13 date, it's imperative to make some sort of decision as soon as possible because there are plenty of parents who don't have the option to, you know, work from home all day. And it may not be a a two or three or four day, they may have to plan weeks in advance to try and and make their um childcare decisions. And especially if we go to something like a hybrid where kids are gonna be leaving early, I think we have to give people as much leave time. And I don't mean hybrid, I mean uh you know, the both option two where they leave early. We have to give them as much leave time as possible to make those decisions. Um. Yeah, I guess that's that's my two cents on it.
I guess I just want to, oh, go ahead.
Um.
I just wanna read.
One question about the lunch, so in high school and middle school, when they, if we were to go back and they weren't have lunch in school, it would be in their classroom, right? So is there instruction happening while they're eating their lunch? Or is it just, okay, it's lunchtime, no more teaching, no more learning, everybody eats? So if there was a student in a class who felt uncomfortable or the parents felt uncomfortable with them eating in the classroom, would they be able to go to the cafeteria and be better spaced with other kids that would want to do that? So that they are feeling safe and can have lunch?
I'm not sure because we utilize some of those cafeteria big spaces with construction.
We put them into like small, like partition them off, people.
The cafeteria.
A little bit differently.
So there's gotta be a room in the high school and the middle school that's not being used. For some kind of spacing for lunch, right?
Well, it might be now being half in, but if we're full in, we're gonna have to use those spaces potentially. So I I wouldn't say yes or no, something will have to be decided. If we have that option, we'll definitely make it.
Okay, um, my second thought was, in hearing what Dot is saying and understanding the concern, if someone does test positive, a teacher or a student, um, we all hope that it does not happen. However, we're hearing all throughout the state that there aren't these little pop-ups, whether it's a lunchtime or a student or a teacher or whatever it might be. So if the time should come, when we do have a positive case, whether it's a teacher or a student, can you just go through um the steps that you would take and we would take as a district to ensure the safety of everyone?
So uh we have uh have a protocol set up where there's a Google form that each administrator has at the building. Uh, so when something's reported to them, they submit that Google form, it goes directly to Jen, myself or Melinda. Uh, and that will trigger a call to the five of us, which is Jen, Jen, Howard, myself and Melinda to get together as well as the building principal. We put a call out to QBHD and they provide us guidance on contact tracing, quarantines, uh what we need to do to mitigate the problem. Uh, and then we quickly react, we notify the public, we have uh QBHD, I believe it's QBHD, it could have been uh caps from QBHD provided us uh all districts with a, they have a form letter to send out to parents explaining everything. So we have those ready and set to go, so can you?
So if one student or adult tests positive, we're not shutting everything down. We're notifying people and contact tracing, everyone who's been in contact was that person that tested positive.
So I don't wanna say yes or no to that, but I'm gonna do that based on advice from QBHD.
Okay.
From what other districts have shown us, they're not shutting everything down. Just yesterday, I was on the phone, uh had a conference call with a few different superintendents and uh, you came in, I believe, was on call and they had just had fifty-five person quarantine. Uh, fifty-five persons is a is an odd number to have, but it's because they coordinated in such a way that they've only had to quarantine those fifty-five people. So uh it don't really depend on who it is and who they've been in contact with.
Once we're reported to them, then they kind of outline what are the next steps on this.
Okay, so then families should be aware that if there was a positive case, that there is a possibility that your child will be part of a group that needs to quarantine for a certain amount of days. And that could happen at any time.
Correct.
But it doesn't necessarily mean that an entire school or the entire district would close down immediately like we did in March.
The better we are coordinated, we are coordinated well, uh the best through our ability, middle high very well at at elementary. We anticipate it to be mitigated to those consequences.
Okay, thank you. And then one more question, I'm thinking about.
Can I ask a question? Can you hear me?
Hey, Wes.
Hi, Wes.
Um, so I'm just trying to understand because uh because what Randy asks, I think is really, really important. Um, what I don't understand though is that it sounds to me like what you're saying is that if there's a case, then you get together and you approach uh you quote, you approach the health authority and ask them how to handle it. And and I guess my question is, why isn't that in place before it happens? Uh, why is it that that they need to be approached if there is a problem? Shouldn't there be some kind of a scenario already set out? Um, or did I miss it? Maybe there is.
No, we've actually asked that question a long time ago, QBHD, they said because there's an infinite amount of scenarios that could happen. Uh, there's not a protocol for each and different scenarios called for different actions. And it's very difficult to predict uh who's coming in contact with who and.
Sometimes it's when symptoms occur, um when the onset happens and those kinds of things.
So there's a lot of information that we need to provide that in order for them to provide us guidance.
Okay.
I have a Amanda question about her numbers.
Sure.
Amanda, are those the numbers um that you were talking about?
Well, guide is a very good interview if you.
Or are they certain groups of the population?
So that's a great question, Randy. I looked at both, found that the entire state and Newton-Haven County. And I used August as a baseline because August, considering we're in a global pandemic, August numbers are kind of ideal for state magic. We really are model citizens in the country, our numbers are super low. Even nervous Nellies like me feel pretty okay about interacting with folks, right? And then you look at when schools open, some schools started opening in person on September 8th, others started on September 14th. We have like full kids, like our full population of kids would be in villi to attend in person as of September 21st. So looking at those various milestones throughout the state, you see, when you look at it as a snapshot, our numbers still look good. But the trajectory, the trend over time is that we are slowly creeping up. And as we increase vectors, you're gonna see a logarithmic increase of potential cases and potential hospitalizations. Unless we can continue to keep the same precautions in place, like six feet of distance and masking. With those things in place, I feel like we're gonna continue to be successful. We are being fairly successful right now, even though we are seeing a slow uptick. My concern is that if we remove the six feet of distance, or I'm not, I know we're not recommending any mask from the world or any of that, but if we were to remove that, um, that that has the a high, a middle to high likelihood of increasing numbers further and faster.
I just, I'm just wondering if we look at New Haven County, you know, that includes the entire population of the New Haven County tests. And so that would include um universities as well. And I know from friends that have students attending um Fairfield and Sacred Heart and UNH that there are a significant amount of cases in those areas which are all in New Haven County. So I just wonder if those are.
Purple County or?
Oh, sorry, Purple County, sorry. So New Haven is University of New Haven.
And Southern.
And Southern.
And Southern.
And uh.
And yeah.
And low and uh.
So, right, and averted. So any of those cases, I'm just wondering how much of that are in that population?
So I think that's another good point though, Randy, because I think we do a lot of things to kind of point at indicators of what might be COVID. Where a lot of higher education institutes have actually mandated testing. And I think that when you mandate testing, you know a hundred percent, well, as accurate as you can be, you know whether you have COVID or not. Like, so I think that you actually get a better sample when you have more people being tested.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
Right.
What if, what if we did this, um, the school seems to have different penalties back and forth? I do believe, my my personal belief is to go back to school, that my my children, our teachers, we need to get back into normal. We just started school last week with our middle and high school, which has started uh this week with our elementary school. October 13th is basically three weeks away, right? Four weeks?
Certainly, close to three.
Okay. What if please look at our data, the week of October 7th? And again, I know that's close. Um, for October 7th, we take a look at that data and the amount of cases. We have that many cases from those that have started to school, then you make that decision and say, no, we're not gonna be able to go to school.
So when you say that, the data that we used to.
Virus thing.
Presentation.
Yeah, and what we know, or we know if um we're showing.
Virus thing, virus thing, virus thing.
Anyone getting COVID, we see an increase in in that.
Shut down and the.
And we make it, we have another discussion. Again, I know for parents, I'm not gonna have to go to daycare.
Usually.
If we suddenly say, sorry, you're not going back on October 13th, our cases have gone up, it's gonna cause a problem. But at the same time, if we let them know now something that they could plan, we say, okay, our plan is to go back to school October 13th. But if something should happen, I need to have contingency plan. And just that cover for most people to give the board some comfort, apparently telling top of this role, you know. Um, some comfort to say, we're gonna vote on it, look at, make that decision, you know, let's go. And then evaluate it again that last week.
Yeah, so it's like a condition of the rule.
Yeah, yeah.
Is um, I'm, I'm, can I ask you a question, since Randy, this is your, uh, it looks so steep. Uh, in terms of uh the numbers, do you think that between now and 13th, based on what we have seen, do you think the numbers will substantially go up, or do you think we're gonna be a lot the same?
It it's really hard to say, because I don't know what our latest compliance looks like. My assumption is that everybody's complying with masks, that's, but that's a big assumption to make, right? Um, it it does look like we are on the rise, but we don't have a lot of data, you know? And even the correlations that are showing right now are based on very limited data. So the longer we kind of let, we, the the longer we carefully, carefully, like see what's going on, the better the data are gonna be.
I'm I'm comfortable with with that condition of the rule. Cause the thing is, you know, I think from a branch perspective, that they need time to plan all these things, you know? And you know, Matt just said, you know, this lead will go back to, you know, all ID that we need. So, you know, rather than us coming back and excessively creating the whole patient. So this was said, what the commissioners are in terms of, you know, um, looking at what the numbers, the product, to make the final decision. Or he makes a final decision next week to come back in time.
Here we go. Actually, you didn't even have to bring this to the board to vote on.
Thank you for telling me and reminding me of this.
Uh, technically, the commissioner had said at the start of the year that it depended on superintendents to make the choice. But I don't, I don't think we're both doing this, this, this full time.
Which we appreciate, you brought us in from the beginning and kept us part of that whole discussion.
I think I'm, I'm gonna just have it.
I just wanna clarify, just like three things, cause I think it'll help parents too. If the numbers go up, so now we're talking about if the numbers go up and then we reassess on October 7th, would keeping them hybrid be one of those options? Or are we talking just, okay? And then if parents are uncomfortable with sending their kids full-time on October 13th, they can still opt out, even if they weren't part of the opt-out program.
Right.
Right. And then is there any consideration? How do I say this? About testing, like just doing randomized testing or anything like that?
It's not, it's not, it's not recommended by the state department.
Okay, and then I know we have some student teachers coming in and I know they possibly get randomly tested at the university. So he would be privy to information to know that that student would be coming in or.
Yes.
But then they would have to contact trace and and all that, okay? Cool. And then the last one, I promise. Um, I'm just looking at the elementary numbers for the classrooms. And I think you said, like this two, three ID in Green Acres is twenty kids, Contemporary Ridge Road is twenty-one, and then fourth at Green Acres is twenty-one and nineteen. I mean, those are, for those classrooms, that's a lot of kids in that.
And then fourth and Green Acres is twenty one and nineteen. I mean, those are, for those classrooms, that's a lot of kids in that classroom. And like the three to four feet, I feel like, you know, that's gonna be tight. And you had mentioned that they may.
Yeah.
The classroom are clean out. Oh, yeah, no, I know.
Yeah, so they, I mean, book show, right?
Everything's.
Yeah, but I'm just saying for the twenty months kids, you had mentioned that maybe they can spread out and go into the library and other spaces too.
We'll have these uh, as with building avenues, you know, the buildings, the best, we'll have to utilize those spaces for those big classes.
Right.
I think those spaces are available.
Yeah, I mean, the classrooms are great, you can see them, like when the kids log on to their Google meets, like and they're all shiny, like yeah, they look amazing. I just, those, those are just a little bit larger.
Yeah, I think by taking, taking out the everything in the classrooms.
It helps.
Which probably really has opened up a space for most students on the elementary level.
Okay. And then I just wanted to clarify those three things.
Me and Amanda, quick comment. Uh on that October seventh date, we will not have updated information until October eighth, Thursday, and that's when, but.
But we can do October eight, yeah.
And that's actually the date of our October board meeting, so.
Okay, but unfortunately, it come out until.
No.
That's what I was gonna say, we think we can't be sure.
Right, we can't be sure, they'll be ready even by the time we meet on October eighth, so.
Okay, so we'll make that decision on October eight, I'll just say, say that, and if this is how we do it to October eighth, stop.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that the message to parents is, is at this point, everybody has their traffic set in place. So what we're saying is, don't give it away. That on the October eighth, if things are looking good, we'll go back full time.
Right.
Because I, I don't want any parent say, okay, definitely gonna go back full time, you know, I don't need you on Sep- October ninth. Okay, just wanna make sure that message is very important to parents.
And as far as different plan, he goes, we're only gonna play like October, sorry, October thirteenth, full time.
Yeah. I think that should be the point, because that's what other districts did, who did go back to school, like where yours is school would be back to school, right?
No, we're hybrid, so, yeah.
You're still like, um Jen, uh to Bradley School, we were going back.
Sure.
So they, from the beginning, they said, okay, school starts around September first, unless we see increase in in cases. And then what we would do, we keep our, our parents and um faculty and updated as we have through websites through global.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that too, Amanda. I think it's important for parents to know so they can plan for their families. But our educators, this is, the hybrid model is just an unbelievable task that I don't really think people outside of education realize. Um and so to switch from hybrid to back to full time is going to take planning. So it's not just parents needing to prepare, but it's also our educators and our faculty that need to prepare as well. And I think that's just, it's, it's as respectful as we can be with the understanding that things could change at any time. But I, I, and yeah, I agree with you. I think that um planning to open full time on the thirteenth. As long as the numbers stay positive, which we will reassess on eighth, I think it's really, I think it's a good, it's a good idea. And I think it um gives some hope and promise, like Steve had mentioned before, but also allows parents to plan and up and and teachers and faculty to plan.
But keep the daycare, like don't say.
Yeah.
But keep your, your.
We just want to. Then we'll get rid of it, yeah.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
We just need some clarity on how middle high school.
Yeah. So I'm thinking middle high school. Yes, just when I have to speak up a little bit, but just.
Okay.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. Before middle and high school, this is something that I'm proposing. What do you do half day or now to remember?
October thirteenth, you know, throughout.
Right, October thirteenth through, we come back on Thanksgiving. Make a determination at that time, how or what could be changed, give anything.
So we would make that decision potentially at the no, no board meeting, you could do the same thing. We are here looking at the numbers and we're trying to make appropriate.
Or we all pick up that. I, I see where you're coming from, and I, I just, I, it's just the changes and the changes for those high school students. Um and just making sure that they do get a one by twelve forty five and that they are logged in and that they're not losing that time. Um I think is, is, is crucial. Um I, I, I hear what you're saying. Uh I just, you know, I'm, I'm gonna say. I don't think, I personally, fifty six minutes of instructional time is not fifty six minutes of instructional time. Which I'm still gonna say, which I'm gonna break down, we're down to forty five, or if the bus delayed and then. Right. My curve, I don't like to see them going all day, right, from listening to Linda and Patrick or somebody. At this point, it doesn't seem feasible for lunches.
It, I just, it's, it's concerning with you and plus. Going in and the way that we came in, we were able to practice a little bit in the hybrid, we were able to start remote. And then slowly transitioned and this will provide the other transition for us to get students back five days, see how that ended, work to get them back fully. So I think it's just, as Ally said today, a slow and steady pace to it. I think we, in the district, we've done a very good job with that.
When we're talking about uh doing a, a half day group, you know, uh until, until Thanksgiving, when is the end of the first marking period?
It's right around, it's right around the November, like.
It's right, yeah, mid-November.
Right.
Mid-November.
Right. So maybe that's why somebody was not saying, maybe we start to the first, go up to the first marking period and then make that decision. If it can be done, because I think this is something that, uh you have to talk with your high school and middle school administrators about the lunch time.
I'm looking at the numbers for the high school, and if I'm reading this right, um you're saying that there's an average of fifteen students in each classroom. So, I mean, from what I remember, those rooms are pretty big. So if you have three rows of five kids, they're, they're pretty spread out, right? What are they, about four feet apart?
Three to four feet, that's what I said. The concern is the, the non-core classes, the cooking, automotive, where if you make a cooking classes, they are in little cooking pods. So we're gonna have to adjust the schedule to make sure that they're keeping appropriate distance and they're not too many kids in a class.
Okay.
We need to rethink how we structure them, because we can't have all those students at the same time in those more hands-on classes.
So when you talk about um how many of those classes there are versus the traditional classes where the spacing would be. A, you know, a good distance apart, how many are we talking about? That's the minority. So that's kind of my concern too, is so if the majority of classes can provide the appropriate space for eating safely at the middle school and high school.
Not eating without six people sitting, they're recommended mask off for six people, can't you got?
Okay, so but the, but so the, the amount of the classrooms that we're talking about are really in the minority, right? I mean, it's not, you know, forty five percent, it's significantly less. So is, I mean, can we be creative, like Amanda was talking, and just figure out a way where those particular classes. If they're, you know, it's maybe, maybe just taking four kids out of those rooms would make the biggest difference.
And Melinda had that idea just off the cuff the other day about, um although we have to cut the curriculum in some of those classes. Have an half the class in for an A day, the other half in on the other A day instead, you know, constantly go study all or something like that to, to keep the numbers a little bit lower. But it's something we have to watch out.
Or splitting the block and going for like half the block, they have to study all just so there are less students.
I, I know it's a lot of work and a lot of thinking and going back and forth, but I, it just is really concerning to me to break the, the days down and have. You know, what did I say, fifty six minute periods at the middle school, high school level, and they're losing a lot of instructional time. For the minority of classrooms that can be changed or adjusted.
Well, Randy, that's if, that's when you have the evening.
Yeah, with the half day thing.
Yeah. So actually, the second point in terms of the half day is basically the lunch issue.
Yeah.
Is there ways to further look at that? Uh because I think you said you haven't explored especially what other people are doing. And and all those, those like that is kind of what is.
It is a second point, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, while this whole, you know, while we're looking forward, you know, everything and trying to look at the numbers and everything. If you can take, you know, the whole team to look at, at that and talk and build uh administrators to see if. There's a little bit in terms of that specific uh concern.
Yeah, because if we decide to go back full time, you know, unless the numbers change on the seventh of eighth, whenever we meet. At least families will know that kids are going back every day, five days. The only thing that we're unsure of is half day or full day, which is something that. What's that?
For middle school, high school, right?
For middle school, high school, right. And so that would really kind of be the only unknown right now, is it gonna be half day or full day?
Okay. Right.
And that's dependent on spacing for lunch. Right, okay.
And um are, are we all comfortable in, do we have, as we talked about it? And then having um Patrick and Linda speak to their administrator. Um their teaching staff, talk a lot, talk a different thing, and they make that decision about, is a little bit going back full time? To two o'clock or is it twelve o'clock? If not, since we don't have half day right now.
So generally, I'm okay with that, but I do just wanna push for a little bit more of the specifics on what would trigger us not going through with increasing. So I think that like, don't, you know, Patrick and the administrators, like the utmost confidence in their ability to make that decision. But I just wanna know a little more about the numbers behind it.
And then compute, um yeah, value out of district.
But I have a concern about that, because right now, like we, the secondary indicators, we are seeing upward trends. That are statistically significant changes right now, but we are in kind of an ideal number situation. So I just wanna push a little harder on like what those numbers are gonna be, because parents are gonna watch these very closely as these metrics come out. From the governor's office daily, weekly, whatever it is. That is, are we just looking at the cases per hundred thousand residents or are we looking at both of those things combined?
So the data that we're looking at is what I, I showed in that first slide, that blue chart, and so when it's that one. So and I know that number per uh full in person is less than ten.
So that's, that's like the leading indicator, right? So there are the secondary indicators that are, that talk about the trending.
That's leading. So we'll, we'll look, we'll continue, I'll look at all the ones that they have listed, uh and. Present to you what we think is best based on the trends we're seeing, based on conversations with QBHD as well. Uh in, in conversation, they recommended, like I keep saying, a slow and steady pace there. Uh so they, they like people to be hydrated because it helps that mitigate a little bit more. But they understand the need for students to be back in full instruction. So they, they talk both ends of it with me and it is that. So uh they said to continue looking at the, the numbers, the, uh that they release every week and um continue to have conversations with them.
And I know we talked about this last, the last special meeting, but I just wanna reiterate that the upper bound for the hybrid model would put us in uh a higher infection rate. Than we were in the height of the pandemic in April. So that, that makes me a little bit, the upper bound of the hybrid model makes me uncomfortable, but a four year. Yeah, 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 yeah. So like, we're, the orange band in the middle of this says moderate, right? And that's where hybrid learning is encouraged. And that's between ten and twenty five cases for hundred thousand residents. Twenty five cases for hundred thousand residents puts us way ahead of where we were in April, when we were seeing two hundred people die every day. So that's why like I'm uncomfortable with the width of that band, that's a conversation for another time, because we're talking about going from orange to yellow. And like I just, I just wanna put that out there that um I'm comfortable with the lower end of that band, but I think the higher end of that band is far too high.
But where we're right now?
Yeah. We are in low, we are, we are low, three, three point four percent.
Too low, so we're really in the lower part of the low.
But again, the secondary indicators, it says trending down or flat. We're not trending down, uh but we're still significantly below the two, the ten percent.
So we're at a light one.
As New Haven County.
Yeah, and I think that some of the, to be looking at.
New Haven. As a payment to.
As our payment.
When we have that meeting on October eight.
That's right, yeah.
I think we can have that, we can do that. And at, and at any time, I know the board, we have, we have a special meeting, we have to talk about this, but I mean, we have a lot of. So looking at um, we have made this, this motion, so they have a motion to approve the transition to full time in person instruction. Beginning, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to ask. Maybe what I'm thinking is we make a motion to approve the transition to full time in person instruction. Beginning Tuesday, October thirteen, twenty twenty, contingent on reassessing. What just right there?
These are.
Contingent.
Are you considering being secondary?
Um, um reassessing data.
And are you calling for a motion for that to be scenario one for both?
Well, then I wanna find out from the board before I do this, are we gonna go with full time in school, high school? Or right now go to the middle school at half a day? Or vice versa, go with full day at the high school with Patrick and um Melinda, and we're making that decision of things, um they're close. Maybe we're gonna say some of those, I mean, they fly over here. I, I, I thought we were gonna try to hash out a little more lunch detail before we decided scenario one and scenario two, or I misunderstood that? Well, we can go back to court. So the elementary school, we're going back full time. Based on this, is having a motion to approve this transition to full time in person instruction beginning Tuesday, October thirteen. Contingent on reassessing the data. However, we're gonna need to discuss about the middle school and high school, maybe decision on the lunch time. I wanna know what Patrick and Linda feel, as of today, would be the best way. And I'm putting you on the spot.
Well, I, I, I believe that at half day and twelve o'clock, this is still not having lunch in the buildings would be the best, um set to take.
Well, basically, we're looking at scenario two, and are you willing to reevaluate that later on in the year, whether it be November or January?
Yes, I think you should continue to say good.
Something everybody feel about that?
I, I'm just about understanding something about, about the scenario, and I'm sorry, I know you're trying to bring it to a vote. In, in, in any scenario, when we're going back to school. Full time, we're talking about in either elementary school or middle and high school, a distance of three to four feet. Per student in the classroom while they have their masks on, correct? And we're, we're determining that that is within the boundaries of, of what is safe, correct?
Then you say that is out. Six feet when feasible, that is the guidance.
Okay. So then.
With masks up.
With masks up, right.
So then we're then looking at, okay, they're there full time, they have to have lunch. We're increasing lunch waves in the elementary school to distance as much as possible, right?
Increasing areas and waves.
Is there, and if you said this and I missed it, I, I apologize, because there's been a lot of stuff. But why are we not able to do something like that in the middle and the high school levels where? They go to lunch, some, some grades go to lunch earlier in multiple ways or can we spread it out that way?
They're not coordinated daily day, so if you had, ninth graders are not coordinated with just ninth graders. And classrooms are just not coordinated with classrooms, like they are elementary, so they would be mixing. And you cannot have more than twenty five people in a space, so we couldn't have a lunch wave, that's why we have the cafeteria, uh in classrooms. And that's where you can't achieve that, that space needed with masks on.
Aren't we gonna exceed that twenty five person capacity in the elementary schools at all?
We won't.
With, with students, with lunch monitors and teachers will still be under twenty five? How many classes are good, I mean, that's basically one class at a time then?
Right, but what are you doing in classrooms there? Some of the bigger rooms may spread out, the cafeteria may have, uh may, we may use the gym, we may use the cafeteria, we may use the classroom, the library. We're gonna spread out to different areas because we may increase lunch waves to three to five.
Yeah.
Uh so that we can have that space, so we won't have that many people in a second.
The majority are in their classroom.
Correct.
Okay. That wasn't clear.
I, I.
Have you created with the spaces, that's really what I'm.
Okay, I, I misunderstood. I thought they were going into the cafeteria.
I thought they were going into the cafeterias.
Some classes may, like we may do like those classes to twenty, twenty one, that might be the space to achieve sixty with twenty kids in a classroom. In order they have their masks on, that might be the space. But we will have lunch. But we will have lunch waves as we all know it, of two hundred kids or even a hundred kids. In a cafeteria. Sorry, that was a fair joke.
Thank you.
So are we deciding to do the half day? For sure, or are we saying, Patrick is going to talk with Linda and Russ and figure out if they have creative spaces and determine?
I think I was a little bit vague, we say we are gonna go with option two, with the contingency on reassessing the data on October eight. Option two means that the middle school and high school will go to school until twelve o'clock, and then from uh twelve forty five on, they have virtual. Okay, it would have virtual learning, but that would be fluid and can be changed in November to summer or January, or maybe after the first marking period.
So really, the district is going to go back full time, but we can adjust the length of the days, which we do in a normal school year.
We can read.
Sorry, we're going, the district will be going back full time, we will adjust the length of the days at the middle high school, you'll probably, so. So we do it in a normal school year, there's a professional development.
What do you all think about, about that? So, we're saying that on October thirteen, we're going back full time, but we're, we're gonna decide whether the middle school and high school are half day or full day?
Correct.
So we're not making that decision yet?
I, I recommend a decision of going half day, it's uh, but with some, like, go the eventualists, it's where a little bit more on lunches and whatnot, and I will come back to you with uh a plan around that.
Okay. And I'm like, and but if the numbers go up, that we can assess and we say, I could go back.
If the numbers stay, if the numbers stay the same, I would still recommend, even, I would still recommend we say
Right.
that regardless of what we can accomplish, if they are where they are right now, uh because it's not a downward trend, uh if it is trending up, I would say that we do.
Where, where are some of you at, living on the, 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 the lift, they sit around the lift?
You know what, you can't, you know what, you can't go home, you can't go, you can't go home.
They're basically telling you, you can't go home.
You can't go on Thanksgiving.
Okay, I wanna be clear, we decided to, that we bullet pointed to our parents. Bullet points, I want all hair around, you've got a thing to do, bullet point. This is where our plan is, this is what we're gonna do, make it as easy to understand um as possible, because even ourselves, so you're here, and that's a question, and lots of conversation, so bullet point.
We'll have a, a communication that goes out tomorrow, uh first to the board and then to the.
So what I need to do is may have a motion to approve the transition to full time in structure, in person instruction beginning Tuesday, October thirteen, twenty twenty, contingent on reassessing the data on October eight, uh October eight, or the. And a motion.
So.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wes, what was your vote? Okay, may I vote to Wes? Okay, so the motion passes.
I'm sorry, my mic was off, aye.
Okay, so let me repeat it again, for those who are listening. We just, the board of ed has just approved going back to school full time in person on Tuesday, October thirteen, contingent on reassessing the data on October eight. We will also continue to look at the middle school and high school, whether they will be going to school to twelve o'clock or they'll be going to a full day. Elementary schools will be a full day of school. I also just wanna reaffirm to those that are teaching remotely, or those that are planning to go remotely, that your child can still go to school remotely and does not have to go to school in person.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, we have a lot of other things here, um, where I, I wanted to thank you, but I think that was a great discussion, and you did so clear, we're all about different ideas, talking with one way, and brought through other thoughts that people were thinking in just another minute. Important, and understanding, are the middle schools. Okay, so now we need to have, next is a um. Okay, we've all written, also because Patrick has mentioned, right? So we need to have a motion that give, that given the unprecedented, unprecedented nature of COVID nineteen health crisis and the critical need for these temporary policies to ensure the health and safety of our students and staff as the plan was supposed to be open, the board will suspend more policy nine three one one for the limited purposes of adopting temporary COVID nineteen policies and addendums from June twenty, it's gonna be June thirty of twenty twenty one will shelter, as addendums to existing more policies, for all other proposed policies, policy nine three one one will remain in effect.
So.
Secondly, so on the banner.
Aye.
Thank you, Wes, most of the house. Okay, um. The proposed action is the suspension of policy nine three three, nine three one one, can you just read that?
So, yes, the next one is to uh, to adopt shipment in COVID.
Okay, because we've got.
So we don't have to go to a traditional meeting.
Okay. So manual motion to the board, for the board of dog, propose temporary policies and regulations related to the COVID nineteen pandemic, as appeared by board, common health shipment in Goodwood, which we have read in our agenda and previous meetings.
So.
Second, any further discussion?
Just one quick question, these are the actions sunset on due thirty of twenty twenty one, correct? Without the board taking any action.
We don't have to take any, they just want them to sunset.
Thank you, that's a good.
Okay, did I give all the favor, Patrick, did I give it all the favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Our last one is the adoption, um, of the law regulations, it all go under six, A D C, and number seven. Manual motion to approve the spectator plan, you already did that, I'm sorry.
We never approved the plan in the first place, so. So there's adoption of regulations uh that are mandated by the states, and the board doesn't have to approve them, uh sexual harassment, sexual discrimination, so they're more of an option, they will be mandated to be part of our policy.
Okay, so, and what, that's settled from this.
It's settled.
Okay, so the motion to accept that. No, 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 no motion, okay. Um, all right, I just wanna go back there. Also to make sure everyone did under six and seven, adoption of following regulations, A D C, and then number seven, okay? And then our final one is the manual motion to approve the spectator plan for Nordic and high school sport, and then you guys, which utilized the guidance from the Rio and Connecticut Plan and the state of Connecticut Rio and rolls. Motion? Second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
That aligns with what Steve just presented to us.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Linda, do you have anything else? Okay, thank you. Jen Stewart.
You know, I've been a little over there, something.
Yeah. Are you comfortable going back there, because it's not. No, you're welcome, you have your best vote, thank you.
Um, so as far, right now, PPTs are Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Um, with the reopening, and we go full time to break on October thirteen, um, PPTs will be held on Wednesday, so it'll be Monday through Friday again. And at this time, PPTs will be held virtually even in a whole, um, whole. Um, but I just wanna repeat that, we have, um, our teacher saying for PPTs, they will be Monday through Friday, go back to school, correct? Currently, they're on Wednesday. Currently, they're on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Okay, currently, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Go back to school all five days.
All five days.
But they will have remotely, they will.
Um, your child's case manager should have contacted you to introduce him or herself and answer any of your questions or concerns regarding your child. Um, I can't emphasize that communication among the team is a relationship that needs to continue to foster throughout the year. Um, evaluation, so if your child needs to be evaluated for a triable or initial referral, the staff will conduct evaluations in person. Um, if the, if your child is in an opt out program, you have two choices, you can bring your child into the building to be evaluated, or your evaluations can be done in the case, or with your case manager. Um, so currently, the IEP is always written as a full day, or five days of full in-person learning. Um, staff have worked on completing learning implementation plans that the state um provided guidance on that all students with IEPs need to have this plan in place to document how services can be changed in a remote or a hybrid model. Um, so the learning implementation plan would stop starting October thirteen, if your child is in school five days a week. If your child is in remote, you will still have a learning implementation plan, because um services are provided remotely. Any questions on that, because I know learning implementation. Okay, um, and then let's say during the year, we go to like a full roll, and everybody's role, but learning implementation plan will be back from that. So it's kind of a flexible document that edits and flows throughout whatever model. Um, this is a question I've been getting, if your special ed child is in the opt out program, can they come to school like full time? That is always a possibility, and the transition would be um for the current regular teacher to work with the regular teacher in the building, and then the special ed teacher and the PPTs collaborate to work on that transition. Any questions on special ed, or any other questions that I might have?
So what have you spent here, Jen, or have you put together, or will you put together something to put on, or maybe, or get out of your. About, about everything that you're gonna plan, like, for instance, what if a parent hasn't been featured by a case manager yet?
So they should um contact, but what I'm just thinking of doing once a month is do a question and answer page and just send out to parents, so I can work on that and get that out next week, July.
Okay, especially if it go here, there might be, people might be catching things, may not be.
Yeah, I can send it out next week, I'll have Patrick send it out to the board, and then I'll send it out. Thank you, Jen.
Again, if you could just.
Speak up, I know, I know, okay, yes, all right. Um, and then my social emotional learning update, so SEL, um, or social emotional learning is part of the school's community. The month of September and October is all about building relationships with one another and establishing routines. Um, SEL at the elementary level is really embedded into the morning meeting. The students um are working on their feelings, using the zones of regulation, so children who have a zone of regulation card that they probably either they have in their possession. We also talked about, we got SEL showbooks, um, and they just came in for the elementary students, so they probably will get it this week or next week. And it's really in their notebook, it's gonna be like a template to say a check in in the morning, like, how are you feeling during the day, around lunchtime, process, and at the end of the day, how are you feeling? Um, and then at the middle and high school level, um, SEL is one time a week, usually it's drawn like, um, a block, and they talk about twenty minutes of, uh, this month was really about self-awareness, looking at their emotions, recognizing strengths, building confidence and self-perception. Um, my post on Facebook are really, they come every Friday, it's just a really quick snapshot of what um social emotional learning is, so keep looking out for those. And all those core competencies, which is self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, responsible decision-making, and relationships skills, will be introduced throughout the year. So I know I send the um, like, the social emotional newsletter, that will come out next, next week, and I'll have more information about SEL.
Thank you for the cumulative age, but I would like you to, if you can, he went so fast. Just a joke, Jen, for the iteration, again, what you had mentioned about um maybe the PPT, the case manager, and the learning information, can you summarize all of that? Because I think for people who are listening, it might have been more hard to hear CP, then summarize that here, or you can just put that on your webpage?
I can summarize really quick, and then I could actually put it on Facebook tomorrow.
All right.
On Facebook. So, PPTs are Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, right now, and uh starting October thirteen, PPTs will be at any day of the week. Um, if your case manager, or your child's case manager has not reached out to you, please reach out to the building principal, so they can um contact and make that communication. Um, the, learning implementation plan, all students who have IEPs have a learning implementation plan, because it shows how services were provided during the remote and the hybrid model that we're currently in. And the learning implementation plan is on hold once we go back full time, starting the thirteenth. Unless your child is in an opt out program, the learning plan stays all year, or unless you decide to go back in person, that will, um, okay, plan on hold. Thank you.
You're welcome, no problem.
Howard. I recommend our director, finance and operations report.
Alright, so um, you saw my reports that I provided, um, I just wanna update you on a few, a couple items there. Um, saving for Connecticut Corona relief funds, that's the funds, one hundred and thirty two eighty dollars, that was just released by the governor to all the districts. Um, we were allocated one hundred and thirty five, three to seven thousand, eight hundred eighty five thousand, which represents only about eighteen percent of what we requested. Um, there is no logic as to why that happened, it just, it's just the way the state allocated it, and.
Really true. It is, it is at this time.
What did we need to get?
One hundred and thirty seven, eight hundred eighty five thousand.
Our theory behind it is that towns that are well managed did not receive money as many times as others.
It's crazy, I would say, but other towns are getting thirty to fifty percent of what they requested, that hundred thousand's a dollar.
Part of that's one hundred and fifty.
More than like.
Two hundred and fifty eight percent of the.
Like, such a male.
So, just want to let you, it, it's not from us not asking, you know, it's seventy six thousand dollars.
That happens to us a lot, because we are a well managed town.
And so furthermore, when, when you look at that, it's broken down, would they, it requires us to use sixty three thousand dollars of that for, to utilize on transportation, specifically bus monitors? And we chose to not go to bus monitors, and then we've allocated sixty three thousand dollars that we probably can't use of that hundred thirty seven thousand. So, but one of the things that we are, that the state is considering is to be able to move down those funds, to be able to use them for like PPE, health and safety, and that type of thing. So hopefully, that we'll be able to move those funds over, and be able to use it for that, because that is something that we are spending on, we are spending on a lot of money on masks, we're spending money on uh, uh, the gowns, the clothes, um, handstand, diapers, things like that, so that we can make the school environment safer. I'm gonna tell you the tornadoes, um, since that report that, since I reported that report, three items were added to that list. Um, there was damage to the turf field, um, we don't have an estimate yet for that, but we did put a placeholder in place with the insurance company on the claim for about fifty thousand dollars, so we think it'll be less than that, but that's there to cover the turf field. Um, food in the cafeteria freezers was lost to two to six thousand one hundred seventy five dollars for chart wells because of the power outages, that was put into the claim, and then football blocking sled was damaged by trees falling, and which they couldn't see, so the trees were removed, and that's the cost to replace that is approximately seventy six hundred dollars. I don't know if we'll get it the full seventy six hundred, except that the valuable that's lost, we'll get something back on that. So that brings the total of current loss to one hundred and twenty nine thousand three hundred eighty dollars. Again, that's approximate number, because there's a couple less things in there. Um, we have a ten thousand dollar deductible, so everything of that ten thousand dollars should be covered by the insurance. Copy, like, that should copy the current twenty, twenty twenty one budget, um, for your review, there are no items to speak of at this time, but I just wanna let you know that what I am having the finance team do is encumber the budget for a full year, so that at the next meeting, you will have what we estimate the full year budget will be, should we just continue on and go right on, on the path that we're going, which we, on the full day that we're talking about. So that's what I have planned to have here for the next budget, really, is a full year encumber budget, to show you where we should end at the end of the year. Again, it's just an estimate, but it's our, it's gonna be our best estimate. And then for your question, I attached the, the estimate of what would happen if we went full remote. Um, again, I chose the date of the end of October is when we start go full remote. That is just so we can do calculations. Um, tried to lay out all, how we came up with what would be savings or what would not be savings. Um, if you have questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them. But we estimate that if we did go full remote, it would be approximately two and a half billion dollars be the savings that would be resulted in a budget surplus at the end of the year. Um, I will caveat that with, we are currently in negotiations with the transportation company regarding that percentage of what we would actually pay. In the spring, we agreed to fifty-five percent. That's the number of what we would pay of the total cost that they had originally were gonna charge us. They're pushing that in that number a little bit right now. So the savings could go down to approximately two million dollars if they would give them a hundred percent. So that's just, that's the, so you can tune it in and tune it out when it's surplus should we go forward.
Well, I'd like to say thank you for the way you put everything together. You've been very easy to read on this panel. And we, I appreciate the time and you gave all day and having questions. One of the questions I've been having, um, do you all think it'd be, we should have the bus company here? I know our October meeting may be good, maybe wrong, but I'm thinking it might be a good idea to have the bus company here just to go over, um, their procedures. Just, you know, as we have more kids going back to school to give ourselves as well as, um, parents a little, little comfort when we can ask them some questions for October meeting.
I will know, Jen.
Excuse me, can I cut in there? I actually work for the bus company. If you have some questions, I might be able to answer.
Yeah, well, we, right now is not a good time for that, but thank you. We'll have you at our next meeting. We really want to talk about procedures and cleaning and testing and how we're gonna work on things as, um, school goes back full-time October thirteenth. But thank you.
Okay, no problem.
So, I have other questions, that's okay. Um, the, the damage to the turf field, um, that was done, is that a fencing or a single?
That's the actual turf field is what I'm understanding. I, I didn't actually see it. It is not a single. I, I can answer that. It was, it, I'm not gonna do it in the single, as far as I know. Um, the safety poles that held the bedding were all forty-five degrees and that forced whatever was holding in place the concrete to get pulled out. And so the turf around that base is now like up in the air.
Uh, buckled?
Buckled, I guess.
I think so.
Yeah. And this is that, the bleachers on the west side were lifted up and landed on top of the fencing that surrounds that area.
Have we talked to Sprinter about the single? Did she tell, or are they, we're still in quarantine, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Phil, Phil's handling that, so I, I don't really have a lot of.
Phil, speaking to Sprinter, it is not Sprinter that is responsible, I believe, it's Gilvane because, um, they did all the process underneath. So, but Sprinter needs to come and hold the, like, turf back and then they'll get in, in repair the, uh, the single.
My main concern is just that it's not the North Haven Board of Education being, being responsible for the backlogs.
Um, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, our next, um, Jen, you have a question? Our next, uh, to approve, approve to donation. Um, make a motion to approve the one that fell donation to our David Public School, or specific school.
Um, it is just to the school.
Okay. From the Hartford Foundation of Public Giving. So, that's our consent. Voluntable. Um, motion passes. I'd like to get your two information from the Hartford Foundation of Public Giving and I'll send them a thank you card. Next, may I have a motion to approve the TV monitor from Flintville PTA to put in the school, that'll be at two thousand five hundred twelve dollars. So, move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, it's part of the PTA council many years ago. I thought was the understanding that PTA was not always supposed to buy stuff. Has that changed?
Over the years, it has changed. I know about when we do PTA council, um, we, in many cases, we let the PTA not, not buy things that we at the Board of Education we felt, and any time that we, we asked for. I don't know where the TV monitor came from, but it wasn't something that was put in your budget and something that, from reading, from my understanding, was in the remotely throughout school. And I can use the purchase of different guys. We, yes, we did have that.
I'm not complaining.
Yes, we did have that.
But I did, I wanted to make that very, you know, important and clear on that.
We, we did, because I remember when, you know, when school, like PTA, what we're buying, um.
Every shot.
Curtain and carpeting and, and a whole bunch of other things that when we're on PTA council, we had said that. Something that's why everything comes to vote now for the Board of Ed to the vote for the number of dollars. So, thank you for the PTA. So, all in favor?
I.
Um, any comments? Motion passed.
Okay, next we're gonna go to public comment. Dana, I'm not sure how many people are there who want to speak, but do you have any other comments to say?
Yes, I have a couple of comments here. Um, so I'll start off with, uh, Kristi Huntley. If you're there, you'd like to make a comment, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm here. Uh, so first, I just wanted to bring up what has been happening a lot in the chat. I know people are already talking about attending the next meeting, so I guess I'm somewhat begging that we can look into mute all for next time because it was very difficult to hear and some people even right now are not showing up as muted. So that's just a side note. I know it must be frustrating to keep up with the chat as you're trying to focus on what's happening. So with that said, uh, Facebook has been mentioned a few times, including this evening, as a place for disseminating information. And I would just like to comment that that is not, uh, something that is universally used, uh, by parents and other, you know, community members. So if we can make a concerted effort to use other areas, including things that are.
And I wanted to interject. We use many, we use many other, um, avenues for communication, but one of the things that tonight you've heard us say, we have a Facebook page that in addition to what we're wanting on that page also.
Yes.
Give your opinion.
No, understood, but there have been some things that went to Facebook and were not shared by other means. So I, it's, it has happened.
Okay, we'll take care of that.
Yeah, I appreciate it, just something to be cognizant of. Uh, and with that said, in communication, I would just like to know, uh, whether we haven't done it, that's fine, but if we can consider going forward, uh, having more potentially town hall style meetings because there is so much happening and teachers are inundated with emails, administrators are inundated with emails, but there are a lot of, uh, valid concerns and comments that individuals want to pass on and have a dialogue about. And that hasn't been something that we've been taking advantage of. I don't know if there was a reason why or if we can consider doing that going forward with the transition to being back in the building or even if that status changes, just opening up more regular dialogue.
I'm not sure what you mean by a town hall meeting because our, our meetings have always been open. And then we have our, our meeting when, when we were talking about COVID, when we talk about different things, and then we have people make their comments. Um, we had our forum, I believe, earlier in September, which was a open discussion amongst the Board of Ed, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the community.
So I mean more, uh, you know, even if there was one per elementary school, one at the middle school, one at the high school, there's a lot of concerns that come up even on a daily basis. And it is very difficult to get the necessary people to a conversation because they're being pulled in many directions. So, you know, even for an example, as tonight, to, to make this comment, I hung on for two and a half hours, which is fine, it is what it is, and I cared enough to. But I just think, you know, even with these being once a month or however frequent, I would just like to see more of a concerted effort put towards opening the lines of communication as a, you know, a back and forth, a conversation because we all have a vested interest in what is happening in our town right now, specifically concerning education. And a lot is happening.
Thank you. Well, uh, again, we wouldn't be able to have an open town hall meeting just based on the size of, with twenty-five people mats inside, but we can, we'll get away of doing something maybe remotely for each school or we, we'll, we'll put some thought to that.
I appreciate that, and, and I was referring to something online, not in person. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for waiting.
No problem, I, I appreciate all of your time.
Okay, next we have, uh, Jen Florio. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute yourself. No, Jen? Okay. Next, uh, there is a comment from Kristi with an E. If you're still here, would you please make your comment?
Yeah, I'm here, um, thank you. I just had a question, um, when moving into full-time in-person about things like band and gym. So with the concern of obviously potentially having a half-day due to mask removal and things, then that's obviously the same consideration for something like band, um, or maybe some of the other classes where there's closer physical contact. So I didn't know if anybody can comment on, um, those type of classes and how they'll be handled because I know band would be one of those larger classes and, and done without masks or that's how it's being done right now.
So, band and chorus, um, they're utilizing outside as much as possible. So, um, when we go back full-time, it's gonna be something that we have to look very closely at simply because students are singing and playing instruments which, um, do increase the amount of particles in the air. So, um, if it is done, it will be done very carefully and with the optimal amount of social distancing uh, because the weather is not going to improve as we go on here. Um, it'll become increasingly difficult to have those type of classes. Uh, never mind in the hybrid, but also in full-time.
Yeah, I think that's my concern and maybe wondering if something like that could be after-hours, if it becomes that there's no place to distance in that time after school or, you know, what case? Because that would be a concern when flu season comes around or, you know, in these colder weathers, we're gonna be entering a time where we do have to be more careful just by nature of it's, it's going to be flu and virus season.
We have those same concerns. And maybe we're also looking into the possibility of, uh, even band to be done virtually somehow, if teachers could post lessons and they'd be done after school, something along those lines.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate it.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, next we have a question from Alyssa. Alyssa, could you please unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. So, for the middle school, I have a middle school and elementary school student. Um, and there's the two plans. Can you just clarify? Because what I heard was if they leave school at twelve, they're then gonna be on the bus for, let's call it half an hour. That would put him home at about twelve-thirty. He's got, he'll be by himself at that point, so he'll have to get himself his lunch, do all that. But then at one, twelve-forty-five, which would give him fifteen minutes, he has to jump on the computer and be doing live instruction? Is, is that what I heard?
You did hear that, and that's tentative. Um, we do want to have some type of, uh, live remote instruction for the end of the day for our, uh, middle and high school students, but we have to see how long it takes for, you know, students to eat and to get home. I do need to speak to the bus company just to get a better idea of the average, uh, drop-off time in the afternoons now that we're going full and that we have more students, uh, utilizing the bus and to see if that, that time along with lunch. I made an estimate of twelve-forty-five, it may be way off after I, it may be even closer to one o'clock. But, um, that, that time is flexible.
Is, is there any way, and I did see it in the chat being mentioned and it made a lot of sense. So, in one of his block classes, he's got a study hall, which is really just, you know, just blank time. Um, and then in the next block, he's got lab, which also is kind of blank space. So I mean, wouldn't it make more sense that they just leave at twelve? They have their lunch and then maybe the, that lab class is just remote like we've been doing in hybrid, like they post a lesson or something versus, I, I just feel like that's a lot to manage for the kids to then have to come home, make a lunch, do what they need to do, and then also get on for another live instruction. If we did more live instruction with the actual teachers who are teaching them and then this lab or, you know, study hall just is either eliminated or is virtual, that just makes a little bit more sense.
Yeah, I understand, and, and we do live in the confines of the schedule as well and teacher availability, so we'll, we'll have to look to see if we can accommodate that.
Okay.
Thank you for that input, though. Because I didn't even think about study halls and labs.
It's, it's really teacher availability and schedule and whatnot kind of dictates where people are.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a question from Robin, and it's, if the district continues hybrid, is it possible to have synchronous live classes on remote days?
If we continue to go hybrid in the same model that we are in, uh, we could not support live, uh, instruction. We try to accommodate that, uh, through incorporating our district coordinators to provide some strategic and skill help through different hours, uh, at all levels throughout the five days.
At the elementary level, there are live sessions in literacy and math each day.
Okay, uh, next I have a question from Christopher, and it says, if the pod of students is what.
Excuse me, Dan?
Yes.
At, um, part of the Board of Education, one of Christmas making a public comment, even if you're reading it, we need their first and last name.
Yeah, I don't have, I have a first name, I don't have a last name.
Okay, for those who can hear me, for your comment, please give us your first and last name. Uh, legally, we need that for our Board of Ed meetings and our minutes. Thank you.
Alright, so this comment's from Christopher. If the pod of students is what tuned because of exposure, will there be remote in-person for those students?
Yes, if we are able to do it. I don't know. If, if the quarantine is set up in that manner, then we will be able to provide.
So, the challenge would just be, depending on the level, if it were, um, a secondary class, it'll be different teachers. We're still in person, we have to stretch.
It's more likely we're able to do it in elementary, more so than middle or high.
If a whole team were quarantined, then we would be able to accomplish that.
But we could also utilize different staff to provide live instru-, live instruction while we're building subs to interns, uh, to provide live instruction if students are quarantined.
Okay, so that's it for the questions and comments.
Thanks, Dana.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion? No, nobody else, right, Dan?
No, I don't see any other questions or comments.
Alright, let's ask one more time if there are any more questions from the public before we adjourn. The man have a motion to adjourn December twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, special meeting for Board of Education. So, second, I have to bring this up. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, great job.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.